We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor McLean, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, this world sometimes bewilders me and is beyond my understanding. I see poverty, and disease, storms, and earthquakes, war and killing. Many hearts are bound by ego and fear. Please strengthen my faith in your highest purpose, open my mind to the truth that everything is unfolding according to your divine plan. Let compassion and love for my brother and sister flow for me, and may all be uplifted by your glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Neper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Privilege of the floor, we have Felicia Spalding regarding property maintenance issues. Please go forward, state your name and address for the record. Council rules allow three minutes for
Good evening. Hi, I am Felicia Spalding. I live at 645 West Elm Street. I thank you for the opportunity to be able to come in this evening and speak. I'm here to speak about the issue with my roof at the house. There is a history of where my parents had used one of the city programs to have the roof repaired up on the house, and there was faulty maintenance as we had been told by the insurance companies. But as of now, I am the owner of the property, and I am asking that I maybe have the opportunity to use the program again to have the roof repaired, because we are still living in the house. We have tried to do fundraisers and different issues to try to raise money to repair the roof, but we had to counsel out at the last minute because of the storm that came in this weekend. And also, there is still damages from the storm coming, with the ceiling coming in, and there's still leaking going on in the house. I'm just asking again if you would revisit the opportunity of allowing me to use the city programs to have this roof repaired for me and my mother to still be in our home, and also have the opportunity to be safer in our home. And this is the reason why I'm here today, because it was one of the programs we did use. And again, I have no problem asking again for help, and I thank you for taking the time to listen, because I do need help. I do need some type of direction what I can do, because the house is definitely an emergency situation where we must get something done in order to stay in our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Under consent calendar?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I had a couple things.
Mr. Glenn, our protocol is that we don't debate the issue, and if you want to speak about that under miscellaneous business, that would be the appropriate time.
I'm not debating the issue. And I don't know why you asked me that.
Well, because, Mr. Glenn, we all had pretty much an agreement that we weren't going to discuss issues of privilege of the floor during that section. We would do it under miscellaneous business.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay? Thank you.
I disagree with that.
Consent calendar?
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
We move that item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From Chief Hefner requesting legislation to purchase an ambulance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move a communication number one, receiving and filed. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From Chief Martin regarding calls for police services to premises that sell alcoholic beverages.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move a communication number two, receiving and filed, and replaced in the Safety Services Committee.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two, and refer it to council's Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to submit a permit to install to the EPA for a critical workstation improvement project.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Sperry &amp; Yanni.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose of the city surplus through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation declaring the necessity of constructing sidewalks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to expand the banner program with downtown Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
Let me move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. No petitions, no reports of officials, reports of committees, Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held our meeting on September 24th. All of council has my report. Basically, it was a backup in a basement of one of our ex-employees, a fire department, and that really doesn't mean anything, but they came out and put some cameras in, and found a lateral and mismarked, or we think they mismarked, the lateral. And if we would have proceeded further, Mr. Carpenter would have had a lot more repair expense and on the wrong marked lateral. So, we felt at the meeting that we would reimburse him for, as a moral obligation, for some of his repairs. Like to submit that report.
Receive, file.
Receive, file, and approve.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve. The committee report is submitted by Councilor McLean. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Resolution 1013.
A resolution declaring the necessity of constructing certain designated sidewalks and requiring that the abutting property owners construct the same.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that resolution number, excuse me, 1013 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is that Resolution 1013 be adopted on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Resolution 1013 has been adopted on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 19413.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sperry &amp; Yanni for junk auto and vehicle enforcement.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 194 dash 13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Ms. Townsend.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 19413 has a five to two vote, does not garner the two-thirds required. We'll go to second reading. Ordinance 19513.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for purchase ambulance, to purchase an ambulance for the fire department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 19513 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Chief, I'd like to address this a little bit. You know, when we started this program a few months ago, it didn't quite well, actually, a couple, what, year and a half, two years ago?
About two years, two years, September.
And we said then that, you know, we might be needing more ambulances as our program progresses, and I think you've reached that point. So, I'd like if you just expand on it a little bit, if you could.
It's always been our intention to provide the services the city needs. We kept an eye on the future with the anticipation that one of the ambulance companies may leave. And that's always not, that was always a possibility when we moved into, into the, into the business. We do, we did know we were going to remove enough revenue. Anyway, that came. Once MedCor pulled out of town, we did add a second ambulance. We've had that ambulance in service, and we anticipated our run volume would, would increase by three or four calls a day. It's increased by about five or six calls a day. So, we're making good use of that second ambulance. And even by our own ordinance, if we have two ambulances running, we, we require a third ambulance. So, in case one of the other two are down for repairs, we have, we have a backup. Mr. Cleaves was kind enough to run some numbers for me, and although I can't give you the description of exactly what all this means, the internal rate of return, which if you're a private industry, you look at anything above 15 percent is considered a good rate of return. Mr. Cleaves has figured this, this ambulance, this purchase, will give us a rate of return of about 50 percent. It well exceeds any industry standard or any corporate standard. So, morally, I think this is the right thing to do. Financially, it's also the right thing to do. So, I, I just ask you to, to vote yes, please. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 19513 is passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 19613.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of a cloud truck and salt spread.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 19613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 19613 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 19713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of two new passenger vehicles.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 19713 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 19713 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 19813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for purchase of fuel for city vehicles.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that ordinance number 19813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 19913 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 213.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GE Funk Intellect Platforms Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Control Software.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 200 dash 13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 20113 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 213.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GE Funk Intellect Platforms Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Control Software.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 200 dash 13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 20113 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 20213.
Authorizing the mayor to submit an application to receive a permit to install with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 20213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 20213 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 20313.
Authorizing and directing the auditor to pay a claim reimbursement to Sean Carpenter as a moral obligation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 20313 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 20313 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 20213.
Authorizing the mayor to submit an application to receive a permit to install with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 20213 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 20413 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Miscellaneous business, Mr. McLean.
Just a quick one. Northside Neighborhood Association will be holding its meeting at 7:00 PM on the 15th at the St. Gerard's Parish Hall. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe and Mr. Tevin. The October meeting of the Boulevard Neighborhood Association, Lakewood West and Sharon Park, will be Tuesday, October 8th, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Community Resource Center, 1440 West Spring. Connie Miller from Wood Insurance has once again agreed to come and speak regarding the new health insurance regulations being implemented under Obamacare. I would move that the absence and pay of Councilor Townsend be approved.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to approve the absence and salary of Councilor Townsend. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Tevin, Mr. Nixon, before you do vote, there was a text message received a few moments ago. Hi from Maui, wishing I was there.
Yeah, right.
Paige. So, do what you will.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, but jealous.
I know it, Tom.
Everything in life is timing. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items this evening. First, I'd like to call Chief Hefner up and speak. We spoke earlier about, this is Fire Prevention Week, and I asked that he speak on the fire pits, bonfires. He had touched on last year, and I thought a good reminder.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the absence of Mr. Shealy and Mr. Stolli. I'm going to have to drag this out for 20 minutes, so bear with me.
Is that a motion?
With the advent of colder weather, people are interested in getting out and having little fires, recreational fires, and some celebratory, celebrating bonfires. Just for clarification, those are the two types of fires allowed within the city limits. A recreational fire is simply a small fire that's no, and it depends on how big you stack the wood. Three feet wide, two feet tall, that's a recreational fire. No permits required. We just ask that you keep it 25 feet away from a house or anything that's flammable, so we don't have to come out and visit you. Also, bear in mind, if it produces noxious odors, or if you're burning trash, we will come out and put it out. You're required to burn clean, seasoned wood. If it's, if it's an offense to your neighbor, it's a problem. Just keep that in mind. So, be nice to your neighbors, invite them over. Normally, you won't have a problem. A bonfire is essentially the same thing, only larger. A bonfire is a fire that has wood stacked five feet wide by up to five feet tall. That's the maximum size we allow for your stacked wood for a bonfire. For a bonfire, by city ordinance, we do require a permit. Now, there's no charge for this permit, but what this does is it gives us an opportunity to come out and see where you're going to have the fire, give you an idea of the requirements, the setbacks. Notifications required, because there is, for something that size, there is an EPA notification required. We just want to keep you safe, keep you in compliance. Again, there's no charge. You can file online at the city of Lima's website. There's a form right there. You just fill it in, send it to a fire prevention office. Within 72 hours, we will get in touch with you. We'll schedule a visit. We'll come out, look at your property, get you all set up, and keep you safe. Again, there's no fine, or there's no fee for that, but if you do not get, if you do not get the permit and have your bonfire, and somebody notifies us, there is a $150 fine. So, the purpose of the permitting process is just to keep everybody safe. And just remember, you can do it online. You can stop at the fire station, or you can call 419-221-5150 and talk to a real-life person, and we'll give you everything you need. So, if you have any questions, here I am.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I'd like to announce Midway East Meeting, Thursday, October 17th, at 7:00 PM. I'd like to thank the street department on an issue on Second and Sugar Street recently that they took care of, and also an issue in the 600 block of Calumet. Appreciate their quick response. I noticed Mayor's City Focus Community Meeting is tomorrow, October 8th, at 7:00 PM, and it'll be at Forest Park United Methodist Church, which is 315 South Collins Avenue. If you are interested, please plan to attend. It's very informative, as the mayor and the administration are in attendance to answer any and all questions. Also, got a notice of Road State College. Their next manufacturing training class is coming up. There's some vacancies, a few seats, a basic manufacturing pathway class. It's a three-week, 40-hour course at no cost to interested citizens. The class consists of eight five-hour classes held Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 10:00 to 3:00, starting October 14th through the 30th. If you're interested, please call 419-995-8353. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I got a couple things there. I wanted to bring up, Ms. Spalding, you had left. You had left the day you came to city council a couple weeks ago. And what I've been doing in going around talking to some construction companies, this issue, and I got a meeting with one tomorrow, so say a little prayer tomorrow, and hopefully that we can get him to do it. That's what I want to tell you. But you had left out that day before city council. But we, you know, we working real hard at it, okay? Second of all, I know many people didn't know that Reverend Malley had a house, his house burnt up. He lost everything in his home, and he had nothing left over. And we are going to try to help him out. Maybe he'll need some help there real bad. So, if anyone can say a prayer for him tonight, and I know a lot of folks are pitching in, trying to help pull stuff out. He tried to find some of his stuff he had for a long time, but everything was burnt up. The whole house is total. So, we're going to try to go out and help him out with that. We will be talking about it, and we're going to go get donations to help out there. He is a leader in our, in our community, and he's been a pastor for a long time in this community. And I think that we should help volunteer if anyone can come out and help that out. Down on Nickin Place, we had about three or four COVID forest problems. I appreciate people taking care of it, and wanting to get taken care of yet, and I think we can get it taken care of. Like one of the neighbors said that, we all got to work together on things. We didn't have to do no reporting, and that's what I get excited about, when you have to report it. Just knock on the door and say, hey, this is the problem. Let's try to work on it, get it done. It's got done, you know, and you don't take no letters. And I'm hoping that we continue having that kind of relationship, that no one will have get upset about it and say, hey, why you knocking my door? That's not a COVID forest problem. They took care of the problem. And we still got one more little problem we got to handle, and I think we can handle it without getting the city involved in it.